All good. Thank you.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. We need to roll call.
Mr. Edgar.
Here.
Mr. Fane.
Here.
Mr. Garcia.
Here.
Mr. Gottwald.
Here.
Mr. Hartzock.
Here.
Mr. Inman. Mr. Janus.
Present.
Mr. Jostrow. Mr. McKnight.
Here.
Ms. Mobbs.
Here.
Ms. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Reardon.
Here.
Mr. Suarez.
He's there. He's muted. Mrs. Todd.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
All present except Mr. Jostrow.
Okay, sure.
You missed General Ring.
General Ring.
Thank you. At this time, is there a motion for a Vice President to reside over the meeting?
I'm moved. Garcia.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Thank you. First of all, I'd like to welcome everyone to the special meeting. Again, welcome to our newest member, Jose Suarez. Thank you for joining, short notice as well. General, you want to make any comments?
Just real quick, so I can update on the email that went out earlier today, just as an update. So, this morning at about 11 o'clock, as was mentioned in the email, some of the Commandant staff in an office had gone next door to an adjoining office and found a member of the Commandant's OC night staff to have been immobilized, not moving, unresponsive. And as a consequence of that, EMT and other medical and police personnel were called in. It was determined shortly thereafter that the individual had deceased. They think that the individual just expired somewhere in the early morning hours, somewhere maybe around 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock in the morning. The name of the individual who's a member of the OC staff is Dylan Kate. He's also class of 10. He is a former Army enlisted. I think he was medically retired at the rank of E7. He'd been on the Commandant staff for a short time, and as I understand it, he had recently indicated that he was going to fulfill his contract term and then was no longer, was going to resign or retire from the Commandant staff. The next of kin notification has occurred. It occurred from our police force to the notification of his spouse. And so all of those things have occurred. We have gone out of, we've gone out of our way to make sure that any type of emotional distress or reaction by members of the staff who found Mr. Kate can be attended to either by mental health or the chaplain. I will, I will reach out to the family here at some point here, either today or tomorrow, to express condolences on behalf of the Institute. So, that's where we stand on that. It's unfortunate. It's it's unfortunate that we've, we've had to deal with something like that. And, and obviously, our thoughts and prayers go out to the family.
Thank, thank you, General, for that update. And again, up on the board standpoint, I see some condolences and prayers to the family as well. The main meeting agenda is posted in on onboard. Are there any additions to the, to the agenda? Okay. There being none. All right. The next order of business is the election of the President to serve the remainder of John Adams' term as President, which is through June 30. We still hold the, the normal election of officers at our main meeting. Are there any nominations for President?
Yeah, this is Terry McKnight. I'd like to nominate Damon Williams to be the interim President of the Board. I think Damon has, has served the Board with distinction the last few years. He understands the requirements of VMI Board, and I think is well qualified to serve and support the Institute for the period through, through the, through the end of June. And I think he's, will serve well with the current Superintendent and help us to move to the transition to the, the next President of the Board and the next Superintendent. So, I highly recommend Damon Williams to fulfill the term of John Adams as we move forward the rest of this year.
Are there any other nominations?
I have a substitute motion. Mr. Chairman, I have a substitute motion.
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'm going to nominate Ted Gottwald to be President for the unexpired term of John Adams to end June 30th of this year.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve Reardon. I second the nomination of Mr. Gottwald.
Okay. Are there not any other nominations? Is there a second on the two said names?
This is Hugh Fane. Yes, I second the nomination of Damon Williams.
All right, thank you. We can go in. There are discussion. Any discussion on the said two names by Board members?
Yeah, this is Terry McKnight again. I'd like to stress the importance of my, my recommendation. Like I said before, Damon has been on the Board. He's, you know, is very supportive of the VMI activities, has distinguished himself as business. He understands the leadership qualities to be the President of a Board. I've worked with him the last couple of years. I've been on the Board. I've been very impressed with him. I, I like his, his style of leadership. And I've worked with him just very shortly here on the search committee for the next Superintendent. And I think that he would be a, a very good candidate to take us to transition through the next period of time. And I strongly, again, strongly recommend Damon to be the interim President of the Board of Visitors of VMI.
This is Ernie Edgar. Got a point of order question for discuss, for the purposes of the discussion. Should we move into closed session, or is that not an option?
Okay, so, this question came up, and it was elevated to the OAG as to whether or not this discussion could take place in closed session. There's no definitive answer to the question in the Code of Virginia. So, I've been instructed that provided legal opinion, the OAG would need more time to review and research the issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, my understanding in discussing it with folks over at the AG's office was that there was an AG opinion at some point in the past, and it was an opinion which I thought categorically prohibited discussion of election of officers to public boards in executive session because it was not explicitly articulated in the Code of Virginia as one of the exceptions to the otherwise prevailing rule that we have open meetings under the public meeting law. It's not a personnel matter. If you were asking me what the law should be, the law should probably provide for it to be one of those exceptions to the public meetings law. Because it's very similar to the discussion of a personnel matter in which we have to discuss the relative merits and demerits of individual candidates. Problem is, the public meetings law is pretty clear that there is a preference for the meetings to be held in public, and they may only be held in executive session when they meet one of the very explicitly articulated exceptions under the Code of Virginia. And we're already being criticized, by the way, for recent decisions that were made in executive session. And I, I don't think it's the kind of thing that we ought to go into executive session and discuss because I don't think we're on very sound territory there because the, the, it's not spelled out explicitly that it is exempt from the public meetings law.
I'll just simply say the criticisms of prior meetings that went into executive sessions were fully lawful and fully complied with all the exemptions under the statute. So, I think those criticisms are completely irrelevant to our discussion today. I do accept that there is, at a minimum, no consensus or perhaps an old AG opinion. So, I'm okay with this being an open session. But, Bill, since you brought it up, I think we, it, it needs to be said explicitly on the record, and I'll say it again. Our prior closed sessions fully complied with the law, were fully appropriate, and those criticisms lack any basis.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Here, have we, haven't we done this in the past in closed session for election of officers? Or am I wrong about that? It seems like that's been, been our practice in the past, but I, maybe my recollection is faulty on that.
In the, in the annual meeting in May, they tend to fall in as a straw poll, but it's also while we're discussing personnel issues, Hugh. They have fallen in, and then we've had a, a voice vote afterwards. So, I think, I think we're at a point where if there's no discussions, we take a vote, Mr. Chairman or Mr. President.
Okay, I'd like to make a comment. Sure. Any other comments? Okay.
So, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Over my 34-year career in the military, I've had the opportunity to serve with some tremendous leaders. One particular leader stood out among those, and that was a gentleman by the name of Gus Perna, who ended up being the Army Material Commander, retired four-star. Some of you may be familiar with him as the, also the commanding general or the leader of Warp Speed during the COVID crisis. General Perna used to give us a message that he would convey to his leaders. I had the fortune of serving under him as a two-star in command. And he talked about the three Cs. Character. The character of a person, and whether they made ethical or moral decisions, and what was their ethical and moral compass, and is their integrity intact. Courage, the mental and moral strength in the face of difficulty, and then a commitment, a dedicate, a dedication to a cause and activity or to a person. And I think those things certainly are applicable, and they resonate with who you all will select to be the next Board President. I would tell you that in my opinion, we have created for ourselves a pretty significant challenge going forward. The last time I talked, I discussed about some of the headwinds that we're facing the Institute, and I firmly believe that those headwinds have only been exacerbated here by the events of the last month. Internally, I believe that the Institute now has the challenge of selecting the next leader that's going to lead VMI forward as the Superintendent. And it's going to be up, it's going to be up to you all to pick the right person and to ensure that that person can lead the Institute forward. And it's going to be up to you all as a Board to get behind that person 100% and provide support and let them guide and lead the Institute as long as they are fulfilling the mission, the vision, and the values of the Institute. Externally, is probably the more pressing challenge that has been created. Just based on some of the things that have been out here recently, and as I read the various different articles, I often not only read the articles, but I read the comments associated with the articles. And those comments very much mirror, if not, are at a greater scale than many of the comments associated with articles from four or five years ago. And so externally, I believe that the Institute's going to be facing the challenge of repairing its reputation based on whether or not there has now been a change in the confidence by either the administration and/or the legislature. The Institute's going to be challenged with having to rebuild relationships. We've already seen some things occur within the legislature in this budget cycle. And if we're to believe what was said, those challenges will persist over time, and it's going to be up to the next leader of the Institute as well as whatever board involvement you all seek to gain, to engage and, and have conversations with those members of the legislature. And it's going to be restore confidence in VMI as a public institution. A public institution where people recognize that the mission, the vision, and the values is what we are principally focused on and what we are trying to obtain. So, I believe as, as you all assess the Board over the last three years, one of the things that I think is important, and I would recommend to you, is that you assess what the Board, what this Board has accomplished on behalf of VMI. It seems to me that over the last three or four years, we've spent more time talking about the mundane and the trivial, trivial, as opposed to the strategic and important. We've spent a considerable amount of time talking about the Cadet newspaper and Bob Morris's newspaper, rather than talking about academic achievement, academic excellence, scholarship. We've spent more time talking about a financial crisis that doesn't exist than we have talking about the strategic direction of the Institute in very key areas. So, who the next President is going to be is going to have to exemplify those three Cs in my judgment. And they'll have to be focused on how to reinforce and endorse the work that's being done by the Institute and the leaders of the Institute to fulfill the mission, to drive towards the vision, and uphold the values of the Institute. And so you all as a Board, certainly within the bylaws, one of your principal roles is to manage the affairs of the Institute from a fiduciary standpoint. And that's going to be critically important. And so I ask you that you consider if it's going to be valuable to have a leader as the Board President who has the character and doesn't do things that create compromises and violate the integrity of what you would expect for the leader. Things like recording ex-Com members in, in private sessions unbeknownst to them. Gathering information from secondary sources and never turning to the Institute leadership and validating, and validating that information with the Institute. So, the Institute and the leadership of the Institute has the opportunity to work through the problems, be transparent in their responses, and provide answers back to the Board, and that those answers are trusted. And so as you all think about that, in the area of commitment, we've had a succession of Board members that have quit the Board and left the Institute in a lurch. That's one of the reasons why this meeting is going on right now. And so, does, does the next Board President have the staying power to deal with the challenges of the Institute alongside the Superintendent? And be fully supportive of the direction? Or is the Board Member, if they have an agenda, or they see things differently, are they going to walk off the Board and leave the hard work to the remaining members of the Board and the Institute officials? So, with that, I thank you, Mr. President, for, or Acting President, for the opportunity to speak.
Sure.
I, I'd like the opportunity to speak if we're still having open discussion.
Yes.
Um, I agree wholeheartedly with Ernie's statement about how the Board has conducted itself in terms of what has been conducted in closed session. It has been lawful. It has been appropriate. It has been respectful. I'm highly mindful of that. I have no desire to break any of those confidences and the obligations that I undertook in those sessions. I have seen no evidence of anybody on the Board with whom I have served conducting themselves in any way other than with integrity, respect, and honor. I'm pretty sure at this moment, I'm not acting emotionally or with any partisan bias or with any other bias label that could be thrown at me or any of the other members of this Board. But I, I, I am fully comfortable voting openly on this question about who is the right person to lead the Board in this interim period. I think both candidates are highly qualified in terms of their skills and experience that they bring to the table. I have my own views about who has spoken about topics that, that most align with what I think are the most important topics of the Institute. And that is with no negative to the candidate that, that, that I would put second in this particular election. But I, I've, I've served in some pretty high-level positions in Washington. I'm very much accustomed to being put into positions where those who are behind closed doors and know things that have happened, have gone on, are forced to listen to, read news articles about, and have all sorts of pressure, guessing, supposing, et cetera, but still trying to do the right thing at the moment. And I feel as though I, I serve with a group of those people on this Board and felt compelled to say that at this moment.
Any other comments, discussion?
Acting President, Major General General Ring.
Sure.
I might not recommend that each of the nominees say some remarks. Again, it's an important position. We do have two very high-skilled leaders here. But before the Board makes a vote, I think it would be appropriate that the nominees say some remarks. Thank you.
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you for the nomination, Terry, those that are mentioned, and, and, and two other nominee as well. I think from my point of view, my tenure here on the Board, I've been here to see the work of, of the Board in my three years, four years of, of this institution. I think I can add stability, continuity to the Board. I have great love for, for the Institute and what it's provided, not only personally, but what it provides to the nation, with our students, both men and women. I, I, you know, I want to make sure, you know, from my standpoint, there's, there's calm, there's stability. And I believe I, I bring that type of direction and guidance to see us through this, through this tran, transition. I'm local, and that, that's why I think I will be the best candidate. Thank you.
And Bill, thank you for the nomination. And again, I don't think there's a bad decision to make here. There's a lot of work to do between now and the end of June. I think we need to, as a Board, we need to talk about the areas of focus for the come and fall. I think we need to, to be working on a, a short list of key priorities to give to the new Superintendent. I think it's important that we not lose this time to, and, and fill in what's been kind of a communication void here the last few months. I would like, as the Board President, to engage with the heads of, of each of the alumni agencies to have some, some discussions around what they see the priorities be, being for VMI and also for the different individual agencies, and get some alignment on, around that, again, so that we can shape our conversations going forward. Think there's work to do on the budget. And I'm ready to put the time in. Again, I appreciate being nominated and just so there's, there's no misunderstanding. My interest is in serving out John's term, which ends at the end of June. I do not have an interest in continuing beyond that point. And so, my effort will be focused on May and June. At the upcoming Board Meeting, we can elect a, a President and Vice Presidents that will, together with the newly constituted Board in July, and new Superintendent, be in a good position to move us forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Teddy. Appreciate everyone's comments. We can move into the vote process.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Point of parliamentary inquiry. And this could be for either you or for Pat or for Colonel Wyatt. So, a motion was made by Mr. Admiral McKnight. I made a substitute motion, and my understanding is the substitute motion is a privilege motion, which means the way this should sequence in the vote is that we first take a vote on the substitute motion. And then, based on the result of that vote, we can determine whether we need to take a vote on the underlying motion. So, I just want to make sure that I'm correct in my understanding of how this should sequence from this point forward.
Hey, Bill, could I ask that we put that in layman's terms there, please?
Well, instead of us, you know, if this were, Admiral, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, Admiral, if we were uh, Admiral, if we were sitting in the room all together and we were in executive session, we could take, we could raise our hands, we could make a voice vote, and we could figure out who got more votes. More's a pity, that's not the posture we're in right now. So the way I've got it lined up is you take a vote on whether or not you want Mr. Gotwald to serve out the term. If he gets the sufficient number of votes, then there's no need to take a second. If he doesn't get sufficient number of votes, then we can either flip those votes or we can take an actual vote, a recorded vote. I'm Mr. Williams.
And I think the thing I don't, the only thing I don't understand is my motion came first, so why does my motion go second?
Because I, because my substitute motion came second, substitute motion under, and you can ask Pat or William or Colonel Wyatt if 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 I'm incorrect, but a substitute motion is the motion that's made as a substitute to the underlying motion, which was yours.
Was that motion granted?
That's what we're about to find out. I made a motion. Mine was seconded. I'll I'll also note, I I I think somebody, I think Hugh finally came in, Mr. Mr. Fang came in and seconded the other motion, but.
This is Hugh. I don't think it much matters. It builds methods fine. I I think that's form over substance. I would like to say, I'd like to second uh, what Kate said. I'd like to put an exclamation point on Kate's comments. Um, just to say, and this will be one of my last meetings of on this board, that in my eight years on this board, never have I ever seen anything exhibited by all of our board members other than utter professionalism, collegiality, and um, more most important, people putting V M I's best interests first as they see it. And it's been my pleasure to serve with each and every one of you and the folks that came before. So Kate, I appreciate your comments and I want to second them. Thank you.
As the presiding member, it's it's your call as to how to proceed with the vote.
All right, uh, no other questions and no more other comments. Um, I said that we take a vote on both said names. Um, and then as the result of that, we move forward.
Roll call vote.
Uh, for roll call.
So you want a roll call vote? And the answers are either Gotwald or Williams.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, uh, the the motion on the floor is whether Mr. Gotwald or Mr. Williams should serve as interim president until June thirtieth. So your answer should be either Williams or Gotwald, or of course, the option of abstaining is available as well. So, Mr. Edgar.
Gotwald.
Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Gotwald.
Mr. Hartzock.
Gotwald.
Mr. Gotwald.
Gotwald.
Uh, Mr. Inman.
Gotwald.
Um, Mr. Janus.
Gotwald.
Mr. McKnight.
Williams.
Mrs. Mobbs.
Gotwald.
Mrs. Phillips.
Gotwald.
Mr. Reardon.
Gotwald.
Mr. Suarez. Mr. Suarez, you're on mute. Okay, any any lip readers out there? Mrs. Todd.
Gotwald.
Mr. Williams.
Uh, Williams.
Okay, um, it appeared to me that Mr. Suarez was saying Gotwald. Did anybody see anything else?
He's given. Yes, I agree with that, and he's giving us a thumbs up.
Okay, the uh, vote is.
Bill, I don't think he called my name and my votes.
Mr. Fain, sorry. Okay, the vote is ten votes for Mr. Gotwald and three votes for Mr. Williams. Mr. Gotwald will serve as the interim president.
Thanks, everybody.
Congratulations. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Okay. Is it we have on the agenda?
So we have, there's um, at this time, uh, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a question.
Yeah, I was going to say, before we do that, uh, I think there's a couple of things in Mr. Godwell. I don't know. We need to get the executive committee filled out to have a meeting. And I don't know if it's Teddy, if you're the president, but we need to fill for John and for Tom. And I recall before John going off, he had recommended Mr. Fain for this to fill out this term. Um, so I would like to make a motion for Mr. Fain to sit on that executive committee because I think as a matter of governance, we have to have that committee filled in order to have a proper meeting.
Second.
I would second. I second a motion.
Okay, a point of order is that the V M I Board of Visitors bylaws only allows for the executive committee vacancies to be to be filled at a regularly scheduled meeting. This is a special meeting, so those cannot be until
until the May meeting.
Until the May meeting.
Okay. Well, if that's what the bylaws require. So Bill, let me ask you this. When we meet, would one of the first things we do when we meet in the May meeting, should it be a board meeting to nominate the executive committee so we can get functioning properly? Or maybe I'll leave that up to you and Teddy to figure out from that standpoint. We just have a a quorum with existing members, I believe. I think we need three present. We'll have to go back and look if that has to be. I think we're okay with with uh, Damon, Kate, and me, but I'm not sure. If not, then then we'll need to do something.
Forum for the executive committee meeting is at least three members, as long as one of them is the president.
So there we go. We're good. All right.
All right, thank you. Um, again, the motion, is there a second to adjourn?
Apologies, I can I just make one comment related? And and I don't know if this is out of order, given what the agenda items were, but but thinking ahead to the May meeting. Um, I would just like to make a a suggestion, and maybe this is to you, Teddy. I'm not sure who sets up the content for lunch. Um, but I think we should strongly consider having the search um, recruiters um, who have been um, contracted with by V M I for the superintendent search. Um, either zoom in or if one of them could be there, just to kind of go through the process, kind of introduce themselves, et cetera, in the same way that those of us who sit sit on the search committee have benefited from. I just, given that this is ultimately a decision by the full board, I just put that out there. I don't know whether that has to be, obviously, they would have to be invited, but I don't know at what point that gets settled or set up, but that's that's a suggestion from this end.
Mr. President, I have one more item for the nominations in Governance Committee. As you know, we have to nominate officers for next year's meeting. We need a president, three vice presidents, a secretary, and then the board nominates an at-large uh, non-alumnus to the executive committee. I would ask that you on the board, and in particular, the executive committee, if you can provide me with a slate so we can have discussions in our May meeting. And for any of you that would like to nominate people or a slate, please reach out to me and send me an email so we can discuss it in our committee. And with that, um, I yield back to the president.
All those in paper, say aye. Uh, meeting adjourned.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.